We don't, we don't have a flag, are we doing a flag salute? I'm just gonna call it to order and we're gonna roll with it.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order, let's start with both. Uh, I think it's first, so Tracy's on, is he on?
Yeah, Tracy's on.
Tracy's on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Tracy Rowe, okay. Wait, Karen Kamal.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Kevin Smith.
Here.
Carol Vickery.
Here.
Chairman is here, perfect. Uh, first up on our agenda is review, adjust, approve, agenda and consent item.
I make a motion to approve the agenda and consent items as presented.
Second.
We moved in second, any discussion? All for a vote, Tracy Rowe.
Aye.
Karen Kamal.
Aye.
Kevin Smith.
Aye.
Carol Vickery.
Aye.
Chairman Cholde. Uh, reports, financial reports.
Wow, we're just zipping right along. So you, this, this time you got two financial reports, you got as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, and you received, um, July thirty-first, twenty-five, twenty-six. And our ending fund balance for twenty-four, twenty-five is looking really good. And there might be a few changes to it as we go through the audit process. Um, is there any questions on twenty-four, twenty-five? No? Okay, let's talk about twenty-five, twenty-six. That ending fund balance is fictitious. It looks good, it's a two point four nine ending fund balance, but we need to keep in mind that, um, our CBA needs to be ratified by the board before I can make any changes to our licensed, um, staff. And so they're encumbered, but at the, at the rate they were last year for twenty-four, twenty-five, um, no steps, no increases on insurance, and so we're still in the process of getting everything encumbered. And we really like to do that, anything we can think of throughout the year, we want it encumbered on a purchase order or on a position. So there's no hidden, um, costs in the middle of the year that we didn't think about. So we try our best to get that done. So that number will be changing over the next three or four months. Okay, is there any other questions for me? Nope. Awesome, well, thanks guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Hattie.
You're welcome.
Uh, next on our reports is superintendent update.
All right, so you have a report in your packus, packet. A couple of things, uh, first of all, we have our new middle school principal online, he said his camera's not working, but he thinks his audio is, so, um, Eric, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hey, I fixed it, thanks Dawn.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, helps me put my glasses on, see what I'm doing. So, no, I just say, I'm excited to be part of Jefferson School District and, you know, uh, Dawn, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to join your team. Very excited, all the staff I've got to meet so far, and Terry, thank you for coming down and visiting me the other day, that was cool. Um, yeah, just excited, excited for this, uh, the end of this week with our retreat, and let's go.
Can you remind us, Eric, where do you come from?
I live in Flemish. And I'm pretty much a career small school, small district guy, so, um, this is right in my wheelhouse. I'm born and raised Perrydale. Uh, spent the last, well, maybe what, my eighteenth year as a, as an administrator and primarily across small schools. So this is, this is my wheelhouse, I'm very excited to be in Jefferson, so.
Yeah, very glad to have you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, welcome, congratulations.
Thank you. Big shoes to fill, I had a chance to meet with Scott, what a gentleman, and, uh, you know, he's been a good resource for me already, and I just appreciate him, and, you know, I'm sorry for his reasons he needed to call it a, a career, but, what a guy and what a staff, so I'm, I'm, again, I feel very fortunate to be where I am.
All right, well, welcome, Eric, we're excited to have you. Um, I did have a team of, uh, six individuals total. Four from the middle school, um, myself and Laura helped interview. We had eight candidates to interview, and Eric was our number one choice across the board, so, um, we feel fortunate to, to have. Um, also in your packet, um, I talked about, uh, that we did receive notification finally that, uh, the federal funds for Title II-A, Title III, and Title IV-A are being released uh, by the US Department of Education, which is really good news. Um, we will get, um, we just received our preliminary allocations, um, right after I submitted my report. Um, and we'll get about thirty-four thousand dollars in Title II-A. We'll get about close to seventeen thousand in Title IV-A, and a little over eight thousand for Title III. Uh, we are actually part of a consortium for Title III. Um, so we joined together with other districts, um, that are in our region with the W E S D. Um, so we don't get that money, but it, that money is for Jefferson's use, it actually goes through the W E S D. Um, next on the agenda, or on my, uh, report, um, happy to report that we were able to reach a tentative agreement, uh, between the Jefferson School District and the Jefferson Education Association. We had our final meeting on July twenty-eighth, and it went from nine o'clock in the morning until about six fifteen that evening. And really wanna thank all members of both teams, um, for participating in the negotiations. Um, not only did we have a full, open contract, um, but I had, um, I had been talking to union leadership for several months, letting them know that I was interested in a complete reorganization of their collective bargaining agreement, so that it made a little bit more sense as far as where articles were placed and, and what language was placed in, in what articles, so, um, completely reorganized the collective bargaining agreement and came to a tentative agreement. Um, what needs to happen next is the union will need to vote on that tentative agreement and ratify it. And once they do, then I will bring it to the board for your approval. And I'm hoping that, uh, we will have that process ready, um, to bring to the September board meeting. And then finally, um, I included a copy of the welcome back letter that was mailed out to staff on Friday. Um, and also a schedule for our in-service week that starts on August twenty-fifth, so it's just right around the corner. Um, it's, you know, uh, Monday is, is going to be a workday for our licensed, um, staff. Um, Tuesday is our all-staff district day. Um, we're still in the process of trying to finalize that schedule, we have a lot of mandatory online trainings, but we also have a lot of, just important information to share with staff that day, so, um, would like to invite you to come out to our all-staff district day. Uh, we'll start at seven forty-five at the middle school and probably go until about ten thirty. Um, where then we'll release people to get their IG badge pictures taken and complete their mandatory online training. And I, that is all, do you guys have any questions for me?
Hey, Dawn, I was just thinking, um, and I don't know if this works with, uh, ratification of the, of the certified, but do you think that, uh, maybe you would offer to be there to answer any questions? When they, when they vote on that?
Um, I can, I can certainly put that out there, um, to the union leadership and see if that's something that they're interested in. Um, most of the time, I will say they don't usually want, you know, um, district reps at those meetings, but, um, I'm certainly willing, um, to do that, so I, I will reach out to Zach and, um, see if that's something that they're, that they're interested in, I'd be happy to do that.
You, you know, and I, I think especially being that you redesigned, or, or, you know, together we redesigned that whole contract where you, where we place things, you know, so it made a lot more sense, and, uh, you know, I don't know how many of those, um, of those members actually go through that contract, but it's gonna be completely different for them to look stuff up. And so I, I, you know, I, I just wondered if, uh, yeah, talk to Zach.
Okay. I will certainly, I will certainly do that. And that's all that I have, unless you guys have some questions for me.
Um, I know you have a lot of your time on your hands, but I wanted to tell you, thank you so much for all your hard work on that contract. I know there's a lot of pressure, I've been in on that, a lot of hard work on your part and Tracy's part, so just want to pay gratitude for you for that.
I agree.
Thank you. You know, the sad thing is, is I enjoy, I don't enjoy the negotiations piece, I enjoy reading through contracts and, and writing contract language, and I enjoyed that whole, um, reorganization piece um, of the CBA, so, um, I don't know, kind of a, a sick. Sick thing, but, oh well, somebody's gotta do it, right?
Yeah.
The attention to detail was quite impressive, actually.
So, thank you.
Uh, it's from the audience, it's next on our agenda, is there anyone that has any comments?
I couldn't hear you, Terry. It's probably all the background noise in my house, so, what'd you say again?
Uh, just, we have next on the agenda is comments from the audience, there is anyone that has any comments?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
All right, so that brings us to new business, uh, our first item on the agenda is board meeting calendar discussion. Um, I'll kick off this, uh, agenda item, um, we just wanted to have some dialogue, uh, it's a new board this year, some, a new face, uh, some existing faces, and talking through the calendar of when our board meetings are currently scheduled. Uh, if we want to look at adjusting those to a different day, um, do we want the same day of the week? Um, we're currently using the second Monday of the month. Um, Mondays, for some can be a challenge, I would, I, I'll admit they're a challenge for me sometimes, the later night, the harder days. Um, I'm sure others have other challenges with their schedules, so I just wanted to open it up for some dialogue, uh, to see if we wanted to adjust the date. Or what works for today.
Um, go ahead. Did somebody say something?
Nope, go ahead, Tracy.
Um, so you're looking at taking it away from Monday and establishing it on another day of the week is, I guess that's what I'm hearing.
Um, I'm, I'm okay with whatever works for the board, I just wanted to throw it out there so that you have the conversation, if there is any that works better.
Well, for me, I know my world is set around the second Monday of every month, I don't, yeah, personally, I don't care if it's the first Monday, second Monday, third Monday, fourth Monday, doesn't make any, never mind to me, but I've got a fellowship group on Tuesday. Sometimes I go to church on Thurs- uh, on Wednesday, and, uh, that leaves Thursday and Friday for sports games, uh, for me and my wife to attend with our grandchildren.
To your preferences, my lady.
Yes.
Kevin, do you have any remarks?
It does, does difference to me, whatever works for everyone. I'm usually out by five-thirty, so, um, hopefully we don't get any earlier than that.
I'm, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you too, Terry, I'm, I'm not sure, um, but Mondays actually work for me too, cuz I have some set in stone things on Tuesday and Wednesday and, but, um, yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm good with how it is, unless you guys have a good reason, we can look at a different day, I'm, I'm.
Terry?
Well, you know, I, I, I've been doing this for a few years, and it's, it's always been on Mondays, so, um, but, you know, like I was telling, Terry and Dawn earlier, you know, if, I, I understand because Dawn, what, Dawn, why don't you talk about a little bit how hard it is on the administrators?
It, it just, when, when board meetings are on Mondays, it makes for a really, really, really long week, um, for our administrators. Because you've got a, a late night on Monday night, and then you are, you know, working, you know, just slogging through the, to get through the rest of the week, especially if we go until eight-thirty, nine o'clock, um, at night, it does make for a long week for administrators and anybody else that, um, that has to work the next day, it, um, you know, you've got four days of, okay, I just put in a thirteen-hour day, fourteen-hour day, and now I've got to finish up the rest of my week, so, um, uh, those are my thoughts.
Well, you know, I, I, I appreciate that you telling us that, and I know that it is up to the board to make a decision. But I, I also like to consider the people that are involved in it, like the admin and, and other people like that, and if, if there is a day, I'm kinda like Tracy, Tuesdays and Wednesdays are, are filled for me, if there is a day, you know, I guess I could move it to Thursday, and then what I have on Thursday, I could move to Monday. But, uh, you know, I, I think the best thing is, um, is maybe, uh, if somebody wants to change it, they can just bring it to a vote and we'll see, um, see what it is.
Yep, you guys, you guys have to do what's, what's best for the board, um, so.
Well, uh, what's, what's the proposal, I guess, Dawn? Um, what day is, is for, I, I know we have in-service day on, on, uh, on, uh, Wednesday, you know, every week. And so, uh, you know, the kids get out of school at, what, one o'clock, something like that. Teachers take that time for, uh, professional development and, and, uh, everything that's important to continue to be, uh, 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 on track, you know, for the rest of the, the rest of the week and so on, and I know that that's an important day. But, uh, what time do the staff normally finish on Wednesdays, or, you know, tell, tell us what the staff are looking at, please?
If I were, if I were going to, in my perfect world, if I were gonna propose a date, it would be Thursdays at five-thirty. Yeah. But that's my perfect world, so.
I think that Thursdays, for me, would work just as well as Monday, so I'm not opposed to that, um, but again, just whatever, whatever the census is, I'm, I'm.
Yep, you guys, you guys have to, you guys have to decide what's gonna work best for you all as board members, so.
Well, we also have to take into consideration the community is used to the second Monday of every month, and it's something that they're gonna have to, if we change it, something that they're gonna have to get used to as well, for those that wanna participate, so, you know, it's gonna be a, if we do change it, it's gonna be something that affects everybody.
Yep.
So.
Carol, do, Carol, do you know what day the city council meetings are on Thursday, or second Thursday?
I believe so, yeah.
So that would be my concern, with the second, I hope we do have city council members at our meetings.
Is Bob online?
Melody, well.
Or Melody?
I see Melody.
Yeah, Melody would know, if what day they're on, I would think.
There we go, now we're on.
Oh, Bob. Hey, Bob, so when's the council meetings at the city?
The second and fourth Thursdays.
Okay. So that, so that would, that would put a damper on some things too, I guess, unless we met the third Wednesday, the third Thursday. But then, when you do on Thursdays, you know, you have to take into consideration Christmas and Thanksgiving. And they're always, wh- when's that, is that, that's like the third Thursday of November, isn't it, or is it the fourth? Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving can be the,
It's always on the third.
The third, it's either the third or the fourth, I think, Terry, I don't remember.
This year it's on the fourth.
On the fourth, and what about Christmas? I guess, yeah, that's a fourth week too.
Well, Christmas, Christmas runs, Christmas runs the week, you know, one year it's on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and so on, you know?
So, I, I have, I, I have another question, uh, Dawn, if, if we do, well, okay, so it, you know, if we do on Thursdays and we do the second, well, that leaves, uh, the city council out. And if we do the third Thursday, uh, when spring break, that's always the third week in March, correct?
Uh, spring break is always the last full week in March.
Oh, the last full week. In March. Okay. Well, I, I guess with that, with, with, I guess my suggestion would be, leave it the way it is. But if somebody wants to make a motion, we can vote on it.
Well, we, we need to make a motion regardless, and, uh, uh, and if it, uh, somebody seconds it, you know, so that we can further discussion based upon proper rules, uh, meeting rules, but, you know.
Um, I have one question, Hattie? Hattie, are you still there?
Yeah.
Um, what would that mean for financials if we changed it to say the third Thursday, what would that do for you?
That's a good question.
Um, it would probably be okay, it would capture more of the state school fund that goes into a bank, that I don't get the statement until around the tenth or the twelfth of the month. So there's probably seventy-six thousand dollars that the financials don't cap, don't capture, because we're, we're late recording that deposit for that bank statement, but, um, it is pretty tight sometimes getting the financial reports done, cuz I usually don't get the bank statement until the third business day, or the second to the third business day of the month. If it falls on a weekend, you know, um, and then it's, the turnaround time can be pretty tight with the second Monday of the month. It would just give me a little bit more time.
So, Tracy, I know that you said we need to make a motion one way or another, um, I would like to make a motion that we move the board meetings to the third Thursday of the month.
I'll second that.
Okay, now we're gonna have discussion. You know, I, 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 you know, it's just one, one day out of the week, but I, I think that we're gonna always be changing the November meeting every year.
Well, we just skipped November.
I like that.
Okay.
That's just, uh, that's just, I mean, make, we could make a motion that, that, that all meetings during the calendar year are gonna be on the third, Thursday of the month, with the exception of the, the Thursday meeting in November that would be on some other day. Uh, cuz it's gonna be that way.
Well, we're okay this year though, cuz it's on the fourth day.
Tr- Tracy, we've done that before, when we've had a holiday on, on a Monday. Um, it's been a, you know, a, a federal holiday, and we've had to change it, so, I mean, you know, we might have to change it once every other year or so, but I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Well, there is an upside to this, there really is an upside to this. It has to do with playoffs and football, you know, so.
Yeah, hey, yeah, we can watch the, the college football games now.
Yep.
And Monday night football.
Well, isn't that exciting?
Well, yeah.
I, I would just like to say, if this makes our financial reports easier and more finished, for lack of a better word, not, not anything on you, Hattie, but I, I think that would be excellent, and if it works better for everybody to not have a long Monday, I, I didn't even consider that, but you're right, Dawn, it, it does make for a long whole week after the meeting, um, so, I, I like this.
Well, and I'll just add that in July at the organization, when you have our, when we do our July meeting, we have our district organizational resolution, we list all of our meetings for the year, so when we look at the calendar, we'll look at those holidays and adjust it, and then you guys can look at it on the resolution and talk about it, or agree to whatever, you know, so that we're not hitting those holidays.
Right.
Well, there's, there's also two other things to consider, and one of them would be the, uh, summer and winter, uh, board conferences. People sometimes travel the day before, uh, when it's on the summer board conference, when it's the winter board conference, it's not really that big of a deal, but the other one is, uh, huh, lost my train of thought. Uh, what was he doing?
Yeah, I wanna add to it, Tracy, you're right, like, summer conference for OASBO will be the fourth Thursday of the month, so it would be a week after our board meeting, so.
Okay.
That, to take that into consideration, you're right.
Okay. Um, I, 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 you know, uh, I, I say, uh, we put it to a vote and, and, uh, and roll with it. And we can always change it if it becomes a problem.
One, one last thing I'd like to say is, you know, as a board, especially the last several years, we've really been known as a board to work with our staff. And to know that we're changing, uh, the date, so it'll make it easier on them also, whether it be Hattie or whether it be our administrators, I think is a good, uh, statement on how we, you know, want to help our staff and how we support them, so I, I, in, in that sense, I think it'd be a really good idea.
I agree.
It's still gonna affect Thursday night football.
That's true too.
Encourage you to get done more quickly, right?
Um, either that, either that or we start, start later. Well, if everybody's done talking, I guess, you know, call for the vote.
All right, let's start with you, Tracy Rowe.
Aye.
Terry Kamal.
Aye.
Kevin Smith?
Aye.
Carol Vickery?
Aye.
Chairman Cholde. I'm excited.
Is that starting next month?
Oh, that's a good point. I, I'm, I think we should start next month.
No, Hattie shaking her head.
No, no.
Um, let me look at the calendar. We already set September, what's that?
We already know a problem?
Well, if we moved it for September, that's the day before payday, no, wait, hang on, I'm in twenty-six, hold everything. And if we can get our CBA voted on and ratified, and we would have to do a retro in October. If we moved our board meeting to Thursday, the eighteenth. I mean, and it, it's fine either way, if we wanna, if we wanna change it for September to be our first month, then, cuz I can't make any changes to our payroll until after the board approves the, the new CBA, so, um, and, you know, it's selfish reasons.
When, when, when's Thanksgiving this year?
Fourth. The fourth week.
Twenty-seventh.
So.
So I would, hey, Terry, I, I would suggest that we start that in the October meeting then.
I agree. Everyone agreed with that, start in October?
Do we need a motion on that? Do we need a motion on that? No, I don't think so.
Okay, starting in October. Thank you, Aaron. Uh, with that, let's move to the business, uh, eight, that would be staff handbook, Dawn.
All right, so I included in your packet, um, the staff handbook for the twenty five, twenty six. School year. I don't believe. And somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, please do. Um, that, that the, the staff handbook or the student parent handbooks, that those have to be approved by the board. So it's, it's presented as um information only.
Okay.
We never have in the past, Dawn.
Okay, and we never did um at my previous um job. Um, in fact, we used to and then they discovered, hey, we don't need to approve these. Um, so I was just bringing it to the board for information. You know, just a little bit of of background with uh the staff handbook. We did have this uh staff handbook last year. Um, but it's all based on district policy. Go ahead, Tracy.
Uh, is that okay? So I'd like to bring up what may be considered a touchy, not necessarily a touchy sub- subject, maybe sensitive. A few years back, the dress code was changed. In-house administratively. Board was not uh uh included in part of that. And when the dress code was changed, we had an awful lot of upset parents. And uh, I I I I wasn't even aware that there was a dress code change. Until, uh, uh. Uh, maybe a couple of months later, you know, it's nothing that we ever picked up on the board. You know, from the standpoint of trying to put board, well, yeah, there was some. Little bit of conversation surrounding it from time to time. But. I I don't know, uh, maybe, maybe we should rethink it, you know, so that. The board at least is uh extremely familiar with the student handbook as well as the staff handbook.
Go ahead.
With regards to changes and recently, there's been some administrative changes that came down through Oregon uh. Uh, uh, Kate Brown, you know, with regards to cell phones and policies and all that stuff, so. Uh, I I agree with Terry, we've, we've, we've never really participated in that, but I. Again, I wanna be at the fifty thousand foot level. But there's some things to me that. Like dress code, it would have been nice if we, back in the day, would have uh, as a board, been part of that uh, that process.
So. So just, just like the staff handbook. The student parent handbook, everything in here is based on policy. The student, uh, you referred to the student dress code policy and in the student parent handbook on page thirty six. Our district policy was not changed.
Yep. No, I'm not saying that it was.
Um, I think you're talking about specific school rules.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Believe that um in policy that there are. That our building administrators for various policies can um adopt their own. Their own rules, that the policy allows them to be able to do that. But everything that is in both of these handbooks, I have gone through. All of our district policies and made sure that everything that is in our handbooks matches what's in our district policy. If that makes you feel any better.
Uh, no, every- everything's fine, Dawn. It's, um. Unless there is a big significant issue with respects to the dress code at the middle school, kids acting out, so on and so forth, you know. Uh, because of uh what people are wearing, you know, body shaming. Uh, can potentially be a part of that based upon what a person is wearing, you know. Uh, we need to be very sensitive about that kind of stuff, you know, uh. So, I I I'm just saying in the, in the future, it it's just something that's on my mind, on my heart. I'm not saying we need to change anything. But like Terry said, you know, we have never. Uh, uh, really voted on anything in the uh, the student parent handbook. Or the staff handbook, I know a lot of that follows uh district policy. But, you know, when it comes to the other. Decisions that uh, uh, it might be nice to shoot that across the bow of the board, so at least we're aware of it, you know. So that we're not blindsided, you know, uh, with a parent calling the screen that you know, hear about. What is going on at a particular campus.
Uh, Tracy, what exactly is, is upsetting?
Um, there was some body shaming that took place as a result of it, Carol, uh. That was handled, uh, definitely from an administrative standpoint. With uh, talking to the students, things of that sort, uh, some girls were being made fun of. And some boys were being made fun of, more so girls than boys.
So, just so, just so I understand you, people are being made fun of because of a dress code?
Uh, certain things that they were allowed, when the dress code was changed, get su- cer- cer- s- certain students. Wore clothing that was acceptable to the dress code, but. Uh, they were body shamed over, over why they were wearing those clothes.
Oh, I see.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the dress code got more relaxed and then they were.
Yes.
Okay, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I'd like to tighten that thing up, but. I think we'd have upset parents that way too.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do something like that, if if you're going to, you know, come up with, you know, a, a. Because dress code is, I mean, that's a pretty sensitive subject. Um, that is not something that um you do sitting in your office by yourself. That's where you involve, um, you know, students at the school and the administrators. And you come up with, with a, with a dress code. Um, that happens to be the, the biggest, you know, the topic that we're talking about right now, but um. Yeah, I mean, I, there are certain situations where if you're gonna, you're gonna substantially change something like that, there needs to be. Involvement of different groups of people.
Agreed.
Kevin, what were you gonna say?
Well, I was just curious if that was more of a state policy too, like there's the rules that are handed down to us as a district that. We have to follow. And. Is that with dress code?
Not, not when you get into the specifics, um, you know, some, some districts, um, I'm just thinking back, you know, way back in the day, you know, you're. If you're gonna wear shorts, they had to be fingertip length. And those are, that wouldn't have been a rule that the state would have. Given us, it would have been, you know, as a district, you'll have, you know, dress code. Rules, dress code policy. And you make sure that whatever kids are wearing is not disruptive to the educational environment or doesn't interfere with. With what um students are learning, um, or whatever they're wearing can't be a, a threat to their. Um, other students' health and safety. And then schools would come up with, okay, well, we're gonna say, um, you can't wear shirts that are, you know. Spaghetti straps, they have to be, you know, one inch width um for a tank top, or you have to be covered from. You know, the, the midriff to your hips, in other words, you can't have your stomach hanging out. Those are the more specific rules that administrators would develop in their buildings as far as dress code is concerned. Because you do have to have, you, you've gotta have some rules in place as far as what kids can wear. You don't want it to be a, a free for all. And um, so. But there needs to be involvement of. Of people, of, you know, students in order to help drive that.
So Dawn, I, you know, I think what Tracy's talking about here and, and, uh, you know, obviously he's talking about the dress code. But the, the real main factor was, is we weren't as a board communicated to. And then all of a sudden, we get parents calling us saying that they changed it. And, you know, the way to solve that, it, and obviously that was under different leadership. Uh, the way, the way to solve that is, is, is how we as a board. Now want to be more transparent, we wanna be understanding, we want, we wanna be communicative. With not only the staff and the administrators, but with the community. So, uh, that, at that time, that was not happening and that's what really, I think what Tracy's talking about, what really caused a havoc. In our community at the time. And as far as dress code goes, if we just. Uh, put a policy where everybody had to wear uniforms, we'd take care of all that.
I don't hate that.
No, let's see how that works out.
Oh, it's, uh, I I'm not trying to get into the weeds on this stuff, but Terry, thank you. You, you took the words right out of my mouth, you know.
And that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we did lose students as a result of that. Parents took their kids out of the school because of the dress code change, so. You know, uh. Any, anytime you have change, uh, it doesn't sit right, we, it, it may come at the cost of the district. Yeah. I don't know what the school dress code is now, um, uh, Dawn. Uh, it, it, it specifically surrounded the middle school at the time.
Okay. Um, I know that whenever my administrators went through the student parent handbook. Because I did ask them, because there are some school specific things in there, like around student fees and fines. I'm trying to think what else is in here, um. Things about high school courses that were specific that I asked them, please make sure that, you know. What you're doing in your school matches with what our policy says we need to be doing. Um, but then I went through and, you know, went through each one of the, the topics and. Um, looked through OSBAs, because they release a student parent handbook revision every year. Um, to include any changes to any policies that needed to be changed because of legislation. And so I made sure that everything in our handbook matches every single one of our policies um that we have online. So, and, and we'll update that, um, you know, through the school year as we. Make changes to any other policies that come about.
So do you do an addendum or a, or to the handbook or? For example, you know, the cellphone law that came apart, you know, and I know that you guys are working on that, you're gonna talk about that a little bit later.
I'm gonna talk about that next, yeah.
Yeah, so is, how is that gonna, is that gonna be? Is a new handbook gonna be written because of cellphone or is there just gonna be an addendum? You know, or?
No, what I would do and, and what I have done, I mean, if you wanna talk about cellphones, we can do that right now, but what I would do with, with other changes in policy. Um, is, would just go in and make that change um to the handbook. Um, with regard to whatever policy was, was changed, um, and then we could, you know. Put that out and notify, you know, we have a new policy or whatever in the handbook. Because you do want your handbook to match whatever your policy says you're doing. We don't get. Well, I won't say we don't get a whole lot of policies, because sometimes we do, but a lot of times they don't really impact students. So much as they do maybe instruction or our staff or. Facilities or things like that, um, because if you try and, and change. A student rule in the middle of the school year, it makes it incredibly difficult to do so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So you wanna talk about cellphones?
Sure.
All right, so, um, I told you at my previous board meetings that, um, it was on July second, I believe, that. Um, Governor Kotek issued an executive order. Um, and that executive order was basically a ban of um. Personal electronic devices, not just cellphones, but personal electronic devices. Districts have to have a policy in place by October thirty first. And then we have to implement it by January first. I pulled all of my administrators together um last week. Um, there is a draft policy that's, that OSBA released. However, um, they are doing, they being the Oregon Department of Education is in the midst of doing some rulemaking. And there was some concern that there might be changes to that policy, so I didn't want to bring that policy. To the board at this meeting, knowing that there could possibly be some changes. But in talking to the administrators, we wanted to go ahead and implement some rules. Around personal electronic devices. The school that it's gonna impact the most is the high school. Um, because last year, students could have their personal electronic devices at lunch and during passing periods. The governor's executive order says they cannot use. Or have, you know, be, have it out in the open, a personal electronic device starting from. Um, the start of the regular instructional hours. To the end of regular instructional hours, so basically from the first bell of the day to the last bell of the day. And they further, she further defined a personal electronic device, any portable electrically powered device. That is capable of making and receiving calls and text messages. And accessing the internet independently from the school's network infrastructure. It includes smartphones. Uh, web-enabled flip phones, um, tablets and e-readers, smart watches, smart glasses. And any connected headphones or earbuds. It would not include any type of uh laptop, computers or other devices that our kids use. Um, to help support their academic instruction. Um, if students, um, and this is, this is what the administrators would, would like to do, because this is actually part of the executive order. Even though we don't have the policy in place. If students bring these items to school, they will be expected to keep them turned off, completely powered down. And put away, which means they can put it in their locker, they can put it in their vehicle, or they can put it in their backpack. For the entire school day, from the first bell until the last. And, um, with that policy, we also have to come up with. What are the disciplinary procedures or processes that we would follow if you have a student that. Brings their cellphone to school and, and has it out and is using it. Um, we can't exclude them from instruction, um, for, you know, having a cellphone. The most we'd be able to do is to take the cellphone away from them and have their parents pick it up. Which is what they were doing at the high school during instructional time anyway. Um, so. We would like to go ahead and um implement the rules. Um, as most districts are doing, even though they don't have a policy in place. Uh, because it's just gonna be harder to implement if we wait until January, or if we wait until. Policy gets approved.
I, I'm in favor of this, but I do have mixed feelings as a parent, just because of, you know, how far. We've come from no phones to everybody having a phone all times of the day and. We could easily access our kids and they could talk to us or ask us questions. I mean, I'm sure it even is convenient for schools for us to have conversations on the backside, but. I do see a huge benefit for them not being available to the kids. It is gonna take some. You know, getting used to, again, I think, as, as a parent, um, but I, I am in favor of it.
And we don't, we don't have a choice. We have to, we have to implement and we have to follow the executive order, so. It's happening whether we like it or not.
Right.
Um, we just really wanted to start the school year with some rules in place. Um, knowing that this is what we're gonna have to do anyway.
Yeah, and, and I, what I meant more was there. It, as hard as it may be to swallow, there is gonna be some benefit to it and I'm, you know, if we just try to stay positive and. You know, we all have to do it whether we like it or. And I'm, you know, if we just try to stay positive and, you know, we all have to do it whether we like it or not, like you said. But, um, I think we could see some positive things come out of it.
I think, um, Laura is on. Um, on the meeting and I know that she saw some positive things come out of. Just limiting, um, student access to cellphones the way that they limited it at the high school last year. So Laura, I don't know if you want to say any, make any comments or. Or if any of our other administrators want to jump in and, and say anything.
Yeah, we made a big change last year, um, whereas cellphones needed to be in a backpack. In a locker or in a pencil pouch during class time. So like you said, the biggest, it's gonna be. A bit of a ride moving from no passing time and no lunchtime. But we did see a change. Teachers saw a change. We even had students say that it was better. Because they weren't worried about what was going on outside while they were learning. Um, and so not everybody's happy with it. There were still, you know, people doing what, or students doing what they wanted to, and we responded each way. But in general, not having, um, I mean. We have a lot, we have a lot of kids who are just. Somebody takes a picture of them and posts it, or they're dealing with some kind of conflict back and forth on a phone during class time. Instead of learning. So I think for us, the biggest challenge will be during lunch and passing time.
Laura, can I ask you a question? Um, so with respects to the students still. Uh, having control over their phone because it's, you know, the, the, there's. Some, some school districts in some states are having the kids put their phones inside of a pouch. Um, and that pouch is locked with some kind of a device, you know. And then at the end of the day, they're, they're walking out the door and your phone is unlocked and so on and so forth, you know. I don't know that it needs to be that extreme. I, I, I don't know, but, um. Uh, at lunchtime, uh, uh, did you see, did you see a rise in students hanging around the bathrooms? Waiting to get into the bathroom and, you know, was, was there an issue there with kids using phones? Inside the bathrooms, you know?
That's, that will be our challenge because last year they could use it during lunch. And they could use it during passing time. So it was very easy for us to say, this is class time. You're gonna focus solely on academics, right? And then during passing time, you can check and during lunch, you can check. So that is going to be a challenge. Um, I have not heard great things about buying those pouches. I actually have a staff member whose child has told them, yeah, it, they're still out. And so you're spending a lot of money and I rather give students the opportunity to put it in their backpack and follow. Just like in a workplace environment in their future, you're gonna have to put the phone away. You can't always have it on. And so be responsible, find a place to put it, and then at the end of your workday, you take it out.
Well, I definitely support a atmosphere that you guys are expressing right now. Uh, I don't think that our district needs to be hard-nosed about this. And if, if, if it warrants. Changing it because it's not working, uh, to a more stringent protocol. Then we can probably look at that later on, you know, and I'm sure you guys will be looking at that. Uh, I just want to make sure that we're following policy. And, uh, uh, and, and, and the rules that are set forth by the state of Oregon. Uh, even though there's some rules that I think shouldn't be followed. But I, you know, I'm, I'm in agreement with this one. I think that the kids, uh, uh, get distracted with their phones. That's for sure, so.
We'll be monitoring it, we'll be discussing it, and I think, you know, we have a, a plan in place. And I do appreciate being able to start the year rather than making a change in the middle of the year. Thanks.
Thanks, Laura.
My plan, um, is I've already got a little flyer that I have, uh, drawn up. With some additional information. We're gonna get that posted on the website. Um, I'm also going to have my administrators, um, have that out on their Taking Care of Business Day on the twenty first. So that it doesn't come as a shock or a surprise. It shouldn't come as a shock or surprise anyway. Because it's been all over the news since the governor issued her order. Um, but, um, that was my plan, um, but wanted to share that information with you guys first. Um, so that you didn't get bombarded with all of those phone calls prior to, um, us doing it. And, and knowing kind of the process that I went through in order to come up with, these are the rules that we're gonna implement. And then as soon as we get the final policy from OSBA, then we'll go through our policy process. And, um, bring that to you as a board to adopt. So, do you guys have any questions or concerns about that?
Uh, I'm actually, uh, I'm just actually pretty pleased that this is taking place. Uh, as I've always felt that it's been a big return to, uh, kids being able to focus on their own academics. It's just a distraction, so.
So, so my question, Dawn, is, is, um. What are you doing so that parents know that they can get hold of their children if they need to?
Um, if parents need to get a hold of their kids, they'll have to go through the office, just like in the old days.
And if a child needs to get hold of their parent, are you gonna allow them a time to? I mean, could I, I actually, cause, you know, if it's the way that you're saying from bell to bell, correct?
Yep, from the beginning of this, yeah, whenever first period starts until the end of. Seventh period at the, the middle school and, and high school and, you know, at the elementary school from the, yeah.
So I, you know, I can see some of these, uh, children talking to their parents all the time, especially during lunchtime, you know. And they're gonna come into the office and say, hey, I need to call my mom. Are you guys gonna allow that? I mean, what, what is the limitation there? You know, because they're hooked to that phone.
They are.
You know, and so how, are, are you prepared for that or do you have rules for that or, you know?
Laura?
Laura, I can see the look on your face.
Because really, it's really going to be an issue at the high school. Uh, the middle school already had their phones put away.
Yeah.
The elementary school, it's not an issue. It really becomes an issue. Um, at the high school. What I'm hoping that it does is I'm hoping that it, it. Keeps kids from, you know, having to, they text their parent because they're mad at Mr. or Mrs. So-and-so. Um, and that just creates a whole another set of issues.
Right.
Um, if they need to call home because they're not feeling well, or, you know, they're having some sort of a, a personal crisis. Um, then absolutely, if they just need to call home because they want to complain about something.
Yeah, right, you know, I, I actually can see this kind of, the first month is gonna be tough. You know, they're gonna, you know, hey, I need to call my mom, you know, and, and then you're gonna say, well, what for? And they're gonna say, well, it's none of your business, which in reality, it isn't. But, uh, I can see where this is gonna be really tough.
We, Terry, we already have this in place for if students needed to call their parents. Um, they go to the main office during class time. However, they did have their phone that they could use, and now, yes, they'll have to use the landline and we'll show them how to do that. And we don't ask why. If you want to call your parent, call your parent. Um, if we need to have two phones available, we can do that. Um, we, we are not going to limit the communication. They just, you know, we'll send a call slip and get a student for a parent who needs to speak with their student. We'll make sure that the communication is there. Um, and yeah, it'll be rocky and just like we did with our guidelines last year, we had them in place. We met with student council. They gave us some feedback. We actually made a change. I bought a bunch of, um, wired earbuds so that kids could listen to music. We relaxed our, um, technology a bit so that they could listen to, you know, there's Spotify or whatever. So we'll also be working with our student council and leadership and getting input. But ultimately, we have to follow the executive order, so there's not, you know.
No, I, I understand.
We'll make it work. It's gonna be rocky, but we'll make it work.
I was just wondering if maybe you guys could call, um, the phone company and have like half a dozen payphones put in there. And we can make a little money on this. Because you know they're gonna be using those payphones during lunchtime.
Can we get them with the rotary dial too, so that it takes a long time to figure out how to dial a phone?
They probably won't know how to use those.
You guys, this is cracking me up so bad because my daughter in grade school, which was before the huge cellphone craze. She definitely didn't have one, called me once to bring her chapstick. So, they, they'll find any reason to call, but that was, you know, that was a long time ago. But also I wanted to say, I do appreciate the headphones and the music, um, that you let them do that. My son has said several times in his LRC class, that really helps him to focus, and he was so happy about that, so. Thank you.
And if we do have kids that, um, have a 504 or an IEP. Um, and they need their devices for medical reasons, because we do have diabetic students. Um, then there is an exception to the executive order. Um, that, that they would be able to utilize them, um, for their, their medical. Uh, their medical reasons, but there's a process that they have to go through, um, unless it's already written in their 504 or IEP.
You know, I never thought of that because I got a granddaughter that i- is a diabetic and she wears that. That thing on her arm and then it, you know, her phone will beep to her if it gets below a certain level. And, uh, and she's in high school, so she'll probably have to fill that out.
Yep.
Her parents will.
Yep, so any other questions or thoughts about the cellphone stuff?
We'll, we'll ask you in October on how it goes. Laura, we'll ask you how it went.
Great, great. Alright, it looks like the next thing on the list is me as well, and I wanted to, um, give you a heads up. Um, about health curriculum. So this is, um, this is actually an implementation year for health curriculum. We do have money set aside in our budget to adopt health curriculum. Um, what I'm going to do, um, because ODE only approved. One curriculum at the elementary, one curriculum at the high school. And two different curriculums at the middle school level. Um, the elementary is, is continuing to use the, the curriculum that they have been using. Um, that one was adopted and approved by ODE. The middle school is also wanting to continue to use the curriculum that they were using. It's updated, of course. Um, and that one was also one of the two that was approved by ODE. And then the high school, um, has one curriculum. Um, they have not had a curriculum. What I'm going to do is I'm gonna put out, um, to our, our families. Um, information on the different curriculums that were approved by ODE. And give them an opportunity, um, to, you know, they can look at the curriculum. Um, if they have questions, they can ask questions about the curriculum. Um, and then we'll bring that to you in September, um, for adoption. It's a little bit different because ODE didn't approve. Normally, we would be, you know, looking at, you know, the two or three different types of, of curriculum or three or four. That ODE adopted and approved, and then having the schools make a decision, um, about which one they're going to approve. And then, um, you know, um. Having a, a period of time where we, we invite parents to come and look at the different options. We just don't have options.
Dawn, can you, can you elaborate what? Uh, uh. Is in these new he- health curriculums?
Like, do you have specific questions?
Well, I suppose you could read between the lines, but.
Right, uh, no, um, so, um. I had, I had Laura share with me because the, the high school one is probably the one that you're.
High school and middle school is what I'm concerned about.
Right, so the middle school curriculum is not any different than what it has been. Uh, the standards that we are teaching are the twenty twenty-three health standards. Um, it's the Great Body Shop is what they're using, and ODE did approve that. Um, just for the, you know, with their, with their new updates, it's still going to. We're still using the Oregon health standards that we've been using. Same with K five, they're using the Great Body Shop as well, and that curriculum was also approved by ODE. Grades nine through twelve, um, the health textbook, the only one that ODE, um, approved. Is, uh, I believe it's called Human Kinetics. There you go, Live Well. It's from Human Kinetics, I believe. Um, and there is. So there is a section on, uh, uh, talking about gender social, so, the socialization. Um, and it talks about, um, what that means is that's how you learn your gender-related roles. It talks about what gender roles are, what gender is, what gender expression is. Um, there is a little section on sexual orientation and dating relationships. Um, it talks about, um, the different types of, of people and how they identify. Either as heterosexual, um, gay, lesbian, or bisexual. Um, it talks about that public schools cannot discriminate over sexual orientation. Um, there's a section on, um, family roles. Um. Talks about the traditional nuclear family model. Um, it just goes in and, and talks about the different types of, of families that people may experience. Um, in a, um, in talking to Laura, there's nothing in there that would, um. Be indoctrinating to our kids, um, to believe one way or the other. It's just a presentation of, these are the definitions, these are the facts. Um, and of course, any parents that don't want their kids to participate in specific lessons. Would have the opportunity to opt their kids out of those lessons. So we'll make that information, you know, we'll put that information out there so parents can, can take a look at it. Um, and then if they have any questions, um, they can either reach out to myself or, or Laura. Um, um, about the, the health textbook adoptions. But we do need to go, we do need to have the board formally approve the textbook adoption. Um, so we'll bring that to you in September after we have an opportunity to have our parents look at, uh, what we're bringing to you.
What, uh, don't call me, uh, uh, you know, I'm not one of those conspiracy theorists. But I'm trying to figure out why they are, uh, bringing. Just bringing out one curriculum instead of a couple of different curri- curriculums. Laura, is it, uh, is it possible I could get a copy of that from you, uh, so that I could proof it out myself?
Yes, I have an extra copy. I only have two right now. We're going to be placing, you know, we're gonna be getting materials in for students, but I have a copy.
Okay, I'd like to get that from you and, and just kind of whip through it and look at it. I'm not trying to be critical, folks, um, but we've got a reas- we've got a responsibility to, uh. I'm not trying to be critical, folks, um, but we've got a reas- we've got a responsibility to uh uh to our community and our children and uh there are times that uh that uh organizations put forth uh educational materials that aren't necessarily right for the environment that uh they're gonna be taught in. So uh, that's that's all. Um, I'm not gonna get critical about this. I just wanna educate myself.
Sure. Now, one of the, you know, one of the the questions that was brought up to me was you know, well, why doesn't the the district do an independent adoption? Well, it takes a lot of time, a lot of money, and a lot of people in order to do that. We basically had, would have to go through the same process that Or- the Oregon Department of Education goes through um to adopt a a textbook outside of what the Oregon Department of Education has approved and adopted. We don't, we don't have the people, we don't have the money, um, we don't have the time to do that. Um, we're gonna teach to the Oregon State Standards. Um, we're gonna follow, you know, there might be some things in in the health book that um, we don't teach because it's not in our in our Oregon standards. Our staff is gonna go through a process uh this year where they are doing some curriculum mapping. Um, where they're looking at the Oregon standards and they are saying, okay, we're gonna teach these standards at this time of the year and what what materials um and what textbook am I gonna be using in order to help teach these standards? That is a process that this district has not gone through in forever. So. But yeah, if Laura's got an extra, an extra book, Tracy, if you wanna swing by and and pick that up, we'll make sure that um you have that available so that you can review it and and again, we'll put that out to to parents um so that they can ask questions and um give us some feedback and then we'll bring it back to you in September.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll have uh, uh, I'll have uh, it probably won't be me swinging by and picking it up. I'll have a member of my house that'll slip slip by and pick it up.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you, I I appreciate you allowing me the uh opportunity to review that.
Yep. All right.
Oh, okay, so uh Terry texted me and she's having problems with her audio on her computer. So I'm gonna take over the chair for the rest of the meeting. And so are there any other questions for Dawn or Laura? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go to old business, which we have nothing there. So we're just gonna jump right over that. We're gonna go to uh any public comments. Are there any public comments, Jen?
There were none.
There were none. Okay, so we're getting to the end here. So how about board comments? Does anybody have any board comments? Kevin, you have anything you wanna say?
No, I'm just taking it all in, still trying to figure all this stuff out, doing as much research as I can, so.
Good for you.
Bear with me.
Do you feel like you're drinking from a fire hose yet?
We'll get there.
Oh, yes, you will. So Carol, you have anything you wanna say?
Um, yeah, Kevin, it is a lot. You'll you'll catch on, you'll, you're doing fine, even though you just started, I I know. Cuz I I was there just a couple of years ago, you're you're gonna do fine. Um, the only comment I do wanna make is I do really appreciate you guys bringing up a suggestion to move the meeting to better suit everyone. And you know, I I just want to welcome you guys to always do that. I mean, the worst that can happen is is it won't change, but at at least I'm glad you feel comfortable coming to us and saying, hey, what if we did it this way, you know, and it might benefit everyone, so I appreciate that. And I think that that's about, that's about all I have to say. Where our next meeting is gonna be after the beginning of the school year, right? So I just wish you all a very amazing first day of school and I can't wait to hear.
Yep, if you guys can pop, if you guys can pop in on on district day and I'll introduce you. Um, I know you guys also have jobs and it may not be possible, but uh please know that we would love to have you um pop in, even if it's just for a couple of minutes, um, so.
Perfect.
Thank you, Carol. So Tracy, you have anything else you need to say?
Um, I just hope that we have in uh a really good turnout for student registration. Continued student registration. I'm really hoping that our numbers start to climb. I hope that the community in Jefferson is pleased with the administrative changes that have taken place. Uh, Dawn, you have uh uh, you've really uh uh exceeded my expectations uh with everything that you have tackled uh over the last few months, uh finishing up the school year. You know, I just, I I wanna thank you, I wanna thank the staff and how well uh you guys have all embraced Dawn and and melded, you know, with her, uh you partnered with her. Whenever I'm in the in the district office, I can see the energy. Uh, I it it's always smiling faces. Um, so s- something very positive is going on in that district office and it's kind of infectious, to be honest with you. It's it's a pleasure to uh uh see the harmony that's there. Uh, if I might ask a question though, Dawn, uh where are we at with uh student registration? Early student registration at this point? Is is any of that taking place?
Oh goodness, uh, yes, it's taking place, however. We um, we switched um support from one ESD to another ESD with our student information system. And that rollover did not go very well. Um, and we have, we've had some issues over the past couple of weeks uh with regard to finding out that our our synergy, our students from Synergy did not get rolled over as of July one, like they were supposed to have been done prior to us switching from one E ESD to the other ESD. And that has created some issues for us. So um, I, Kyle has been working um to get that resolved. And I think we finally have everything where we need it to be and and he's working on getting the rollover to happen, hopefully tonight, um so that we can get going on registration. We've had people registering and they can register. We just, people logged into Synergy and and wanna see what their kid's teacher is, they can't right now. And our parents' square messages aren't going out to the right families um because they haven't rolled over. So our seniors from last year are still getting parents' square messages. So um, it's it's kind of been in a little bit of a mess. A panicked mess, I will say, and I'm not real happy with um with one of our ESDs. Oh, that is awesome. Thank you so very much, Kyle. I know that this has been just a huge headache. We switched because it was gonna save the district um a lot of money. We were getting charged over seventy thousand dollars a year um for synergy support whenever we could be going to a different ESD and be paying twenty thousand dollars a year. Um, and um, yeah, that's that's all I'm gonna say. Wasn't real happy with the with the transition. Yeah, and it was through no fault of the new ESD. I'll I'll say that.
All I can say to that, all that I can say to that is uh nothing ventured, nothing gained, okay? Um, you did it for the right reasons and and you have had to suffer through a little bit of heartache in it all. But thank you for everything that you and your staff have done to correct the issue so that we can keep on going from there. I love hearing that we're saving fifty thousand dollars, let me tell you. And and I'll say it again, I love that we're saving fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I told Kyle, I said, just wait, you know, next year is gonna be like easy keyzey because we won't be switching over to a different uh support per group for Synergy. We'll have our new phones and he's not gonna know what to do with himself. I don't know.
So it, Terry, are you still on or can you talk or? Probably not, so, uh, okay, so uh I guess my comment is, is I'm excited to see what's gonna happen this next year. I, like Eric said, I met with him last week and I'm excited uh with the enthusiasm that he has as uh the new principal of the middle school. And uh, I think he's gonna bring a lot of things, a lot of great things. Uh, I know he said he had big shoes to fill, but I I think he's, I think he's gonna fill them just fine. Uh, just with the little bit of time that I talked with him, so I'm excited about that. And I'm also excited about um, as Dawn had said earlier, that um we got that contract, uh ti- you know, tentative agreement on that with the teachers. And it was, you know, it was enjoyable and it was, I think everybody worked hard at it. Uh, there is a few little issues, but we got through those, so I I'm glad that, you know, that I got to work with Terry and and Dawn and the rest of the staff that was in there, so. And and the teachers, but uh, no, I'm looking forward to it. And so uh with that, I guess, is there anybody else has anything else they wanna say?
I'll just say thank you to the board for your continued support.
Yeah, well, you're welcome. You're welcome. And I I do think, like as Carol had mentioned, I think uh us moving that date to show o- our staff and and the people in the community that we do care and we do want them there and we do care about them. I think it shows a big uh support on how we as a board wanna support uh our team. And so, and that's what we are, we are a team. We all work together, so. With that, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at six, is that right, six fifty-two? And I hope you get your computer fixed, Terry.